Hello, I'm Chumsford Town Manager Paul Cohen, and welcome to another edition of the Town Managers Roundtable. We're taping in October, just prior to the Fall Annual Town Meeting, and I'm joined today by Finance Director John Souza and Community Development Director Evan Bolansky.
Good morning, Paul.
Welcome Evan and John. We're going to basically discuss the upcoming articles on the warrant for the Fall Annual Town Meeting and the special town meeting that's scheduled for October 20th, which is would be the second session of the Fall Annual Town Meeting. We're not going to go through each of the articles individually. There are 26 articles on the Fall Annual Town Meeting, 11 of which are sort of ministerial, which will be covered by what we call a consent agenda, meaning they'll be acted upon in the bundle and expect to be approved. The idea is they're rather annual articles that are rather minor of nature. And then there's two articles, special town meeting, which again, one is a ministerial action of extinguishing a sewer easement that's never been built, and then one has to do with an acceptance of Charles Way. So I guess probably to start, before we get into the specifics of the articles, John, do you just want to just give an overall statement or sort of summary of the town's financial condition as we go into Fall Town Meeting?
Sure. We, you know, FY '22 was, we ended on a very positive note, just over, you know, with positive free cash. We closed the year. Everything had been submitted to the Department of Revenue, so everything went well. You know, of course, we're in uncertain times right now with high inflation. The economy is a little uncertain, so we're being cautious, but you know, we closed FY '22 with very positive results.
And you have the auditors in right now doing the financial audit for the past fiscal year.
Yeah, they'll be coming in. This firm is doing a lot of work online and that, but they'll be coming in for some field work beginning next week. So we're looking forward to that.
Great, so basically the town's in a solid financial position. And then Evan, sort of coming to you just as an introductory remarks, zoning. There are, in this case, there are citizen petition zoning articles, really a bundle of three. Do you want to just give like an overview about what's the history or background or perspective on this and what's being sought? Just to give a general understanding of where we're going.
Sure, so Chris LaValle, who's a town reading rep and obviously a resident, has submitted three citizen petitions related to zoning, primarily related to warehousing and distribution. Chris and others have been involved in a current planning board special permit process on Riverneck Road. They were also involved in last year's planning board initiative to do some zoning related to e-commerce. And so Chris has presented these within the context of needing to keep the zoning updated to address current and future market trends and demands associated with warehousing and distribution.
Okay, so again, that just puts a context. And again, this may not be a town meeting with this historic action taken. That's kind of how we generally step back and look at it, John. But going back to the close of the fiscal year, the town had roughly $3.4 million in free cash out of a $144.5 million operating budget, which is really within the expected norms of finances. Yeah, your thoughts?
Right, I mean, you know, the DOR, as we know, often recommends that communities budget so that you generate between 3% to 5%. We're usually a little at or under that. We try to be conservative with our budgeting, but still, it shows consistent, you know, the generation of free cash now for a number of years, so.
And sort of towards that, in terms of how we're going to propose to use the free cash, some of it was used at the special town meeting back on October 3rd. And so now, basically, we have a balance of almost $3.1 million of free cash. And half of those monies are being proposed at town meeting to put into roadway construction. You know, I think, I hope that people, if they've driven through the town this summer and this fall, they've seen a lot of roadwork taking place. We do have a five-year roadway improvement plan. And we do receive $1.2 million annually from the state in what's called Chapter 90 roadway improvement monies, which are basically your gas tax portion distribution to the town based on its population and employment. And we also provide a $1.5 million of roadway improvements in the capital plan and also funding for sidewalk construction. And so this is really augmenting it, and the reason for that is it's twofold. One is the price of road materials and road labor for contractors is going up. But more importantly, historically, we've been sort of level funded by the state of the, you know, gas tax excise for the last decade. And so we're really not receiving an adequate amount to keep on pace of the town's 180 miles of roadways. And so really, it is, as we've done now the second year in a row, we're asking the town meeting to appropriate, in this case, $1.5 million to augment our funding in the upcoming year. And again, the whole priority of roadways is really on, you know, taking effect the condition of the roadways, but also the use of the roadways. Obviously, more highly traveled roadways get more use, which needs more attention, and also the speeds tend to be higher. So that's a portion of that. The other portion of funding, and I'm going to turn to you now, John, is there's a proposal to put funding in the stabilization fund, just over a million dollars, almost 1.1. Do you want to just talk about the state of the stabilization fund and the thoughts on going forward?
Sure, so, yeah, so the, this would, you know, we closed the year, last fiscal year, with over $12 million in the stabilization fund. Should Town Meeting take positive action on this transfer rent of just over a million? It should bring us somewhere up around 9% or so of total budgeted revenues. And it's a little, you know, a little higher than where we've been in the past, but we need to keep in mind that we're headed, we, all experts, you know, seem to say that, you know, we may be headed for some difficult times just with the national economy and the rate of inflation, interest rates going up, so I think it's a good time to.
And you handle the town's capital budget. You chair that committee, and you've obviously seen the inflation in terms of costs.
Right, that's going to be a challenge this year. The capital planning committee will be meeting again seasonally, beginning in November, December, in that timeframe. And all department heads will be seeking, you know, updated quotes, updated estimates of projects, because, you know, no matter what field you're in, you're just seeing commodities, building materials, labor increasing.
Yeah, buying a fire, buying a fire truck, or you said doing some construction facilities and so forth. And then as related to that, there are also proposals to put about another $165,000 into reducing the property tax levy. Last year, the town put $1 million to reduce the property tax levy. And the consensus this year is to put a $1.5 million in total. There was funding put in, as I mentioned earlier in the program at the last town meeting to use free cash, which again, would be less of the property tax levy. So putting in the additional 165 should get us to a $1.5 million, which would provide about a $35.
$35 roughly.
Reduction to the average single-family property tax bill on a, which is roughly, will now be heading over $8,000 as in the upcoming year. And we won't be setting the tax rate until after town meeting with the assessors and the select board in November. So that's another portion of it. There are some other uses of free cash. Where there's the ongoing PFAS groundwater contamination at the DPW site at 54 Richardson Road, so a quarter of a million dollars is going to fund those costs and get us to the remainder of this current fiscal year. And all indications are right now that the treatment system is effectively working, which is obviously meant to prevent, you know, any adverse impacts on the Chumsford Water District wells. So that's what's going on there. The other aspects of Town Meeting is, I want to sort of go back to the zoning thing, because I think, Evan, that would sort of be the second, you know, if you look at the takeaways of this town meeting, my guess is it's going to be the use of the town's, you know, balance, free cash as handled last year. And I think the second one is going to be zoning. You want to go a little bit deeper into what's being on the zoning requests? I know you've got some notes there. I want to give you a chance.
Yeah, so Chris LaValle, the petitioner, has been engaged with the planning board, I'd say, for the last three months. That, as Mike Raizebeck, the chair of the planning board, has indicated, that's been a very robust engagement between the petitioner and the planning board, good back and forth. And over that time, Chris has done an excellent job, at least in my opinion, of articulating his rationale, and then more importantly, answering each and every question that individual planning board members have asked. And over this process, Chris has revised his initial proposal and indicated why. And then there's some items in which he has chosen not to include revisions, and he's also articulated why. So as we mentioned, there's three articles. The first one is to delete the existing definition of warehousing and adopt a new definition of warehousing. The second is to adopt a new definition for distribution centers, and that is further broken down into small, medium, and large. And anything over 75,000 square feet would be defined as a large distribution facility, which would be prohibited townwide. The third article is an amendment to the existing use table, where anywhere distribution facilities are permitted would be only permitted via special permit. Warehousing would remain unchanged. And as I mentioned, any distribution facility larger than 75,000 would be prohibited townwide. So at this point, the planning board has held their required public hearing. It was continued several, several times, but several weeks ago, they did vote their recommendation at town meeting. It was three in favor and four against. Mike Raizebeck has appeared before Finance Committee, I think the Select Board, articulating the specific reasons as to why the four members are voting against recommendation at town meeting. And my understanding is that Finance Committee has recommended the first two articles. I think they were split on the third article. And then my understanding is that the Select Board is doing their continued deliberation on next Tuesday, Tuesday evening.
And I guess the question is, is what will the end result be? If the zoning is passed, if it's not passed, what should people be considering as they're thinking about this article, which you can see is getting mixed support, particularly from the planning board?
Yeah, so again, I think Chris has done a good job framing it up. It's essentially about regulating the impacts, and as presented, the potential negative impacts associated with distribution facilities, particularly truck traffic and truck traffic ending up in areas of town where residents do not want the truck traffic to be. The planning board and the petitioner are in agreement that the primary point of zoning is to protect residential neighborhoods. The disagreement is exactly the strategy as to how to do that. So Chris's strategy is, again, very straightforward. He wants to put distribution centers in a well-defined box so that potential applications are very predictable as to the scope and scale. Some planning board members feel as though the existing major business complex special permit already provides the elected planning board with the regulatory authority to deny projects. So that's really the crux of the issue. But at the end of the day, it comes down to being, how to figure out to regulate truck traffic and associated impacts associated with uses, such as distribution centers, that often have a heavy truck-intensive use.
And it requires a 2/3 vote of Town Meeting to pass.
That it does, yes.
And that's a.
It's the highest threshold that Town Meeting has.
Correct. And, you know, if all 165 reps were to show, I mean, that you're basically, you know, looking to get, you know, over 100, which is, you know, a tough, you know, a challenge, particularly if there's this diversity of opinion amongst the, you know, the planning board and even one of them on terms of the town meeting. And then there was a question of, well, what happens if some of them pass and some don't? What's your latest understanding from Town Council on that?
Yeah, so just editorially, I would, I think, and Mike Raizebeck has indicated this, I would suggest that we try to avoid that scenario. It just, it looks a little sloppy and embarrassing, just from my, you know, personal perspective. But voting in favor of the first two and then voting against the third one, which is the use regulation, Council has, has at least presented several scenarios. So it remains a little unclear as to what could happen. But the most likely scenario is that the, all the uses, meaning distribution of small, medium, and large, would likely be prohibited. And the irony is that that is clearly not what Chris, the petitioner, intended to do. So back to the kind of the common hindsight being 2020 related to zoning, there are unintended consequences, some of which are known before Town Meeting and some of which are unknown after a Town Meeting action. So this is one that I think, between now and Town Meeting, people need to understand what the petitioner's original intent was and that if Town Meeting does choose to follow FinCom's lead, that it may create more confusion than it's, than what, you know, what Chris and the planning board are hoping to get out of Town Meeting.
Well, one of the, one possible route may be to take the three articles simultaneous under, you know, consent order, agenda, and then that way, it's up or down on all three as opposed to one at a time.
And that's certainly been, I think, the planning board's handling of this from the, from the get-go. They, in fact, did not vote on all, three of them individually. They voted on them as a, as a package. And I think you've heard Chair Raizebeck strongly encourage the Select Board and Town Meeting to consider them as a unison package to avoid this, you know, avoid this issue.
Okay, great, well, thank you, Evan. John, coming back to the financial aspects of Town Meeting, one of the articles has to do with the distribution of the opioid funds. And I know you, as, you know, as treasurer, are, you know, monitoring and receiving those funds. And that came a result as we, basically it was a nationwide class action suit against, you know, manufacturers and distributors of opioids. And I know you're sort of receiving money daily, but, but what we've been instructed, you know, by the Department of Revenue is that we have to appropriate the money to Town Meeting, but yet the money really is restricted towards opioid-related treatment and care and prevention and so forth. So I think there's like $140,000 is our latest estimate that would be put to the Board of Health, so. Any more thoughts on that in terms of, I know you're sort of, as treasurer, you're sort of custodian of those funds.
Yeah, I know Town Council's been working with us and keeping us up to date on that. It's been coming in, you know, in multiple payments, but we expect to receive most of it, I believe, before the end of this year, so.
And then there's like, then there's like an annual distribution of between like $25,000 and $40,000 for the next 15 years. I think it goes to 2038, long past any of our tenure with the town, you know, as part of the settlement package, so. One of the other considerations is, is the ongoing efforts to make sure our sewer system is operational and functioning fully and so forth. And so there's an article to appropriate $500,000 in retained earnings from the sewer enterprise operations to do some inspections on the sewer mains in the town. And, you know, the Select Board has received and will be receiving formally at the beginning of November, a presentation regarding comprehensive assessment of all the town sewer pump stations and force mains and so forth. And, and I know, I've shared that with you, is that there really is sort of a, you know, an ongoing plan into the foreseeable future of maintenance. I mean, we, the town spent so much time constructing the sewer system, which was completed over a decade ago now. Now it's time to come back and perform, you know, maintenance of the asset and facility.
Right, I mean, people still think of it as new, but in reality, certain neighborhoods, you know, the pump stations have been working since the 80s, 90s in some cases, so it's time, time to go back and.
And continue the maintenance. And some of them, we've seen in recent years at Town Meeting, replacing some sewer pump stations and so forth. So again, that doesn't come from the property tax levy. That comes from the, basically, the free cash or retained earnings from the sewer operations, which are accounted for separately. The other thing to note for Town Meeting, which I think is a beneficial one, and I know it's a goal of the Select Boards and I know town officials, you know, it's providing some relief for seniors, particularly who are struggling with the, you know, the high cost of living today, as well as the rising tax burden in our community as well as everywhere across Massachusetts. And so we do have an article to amend the senior work program by removing the cap on the program. By, by doing that is how that program works. For those who aren't familiar is, the town allows, under a state statute, you know, any resident 60 or older to work in service jobs for the community in various departments, from your office and the Treasury Office to, could be Community Development, the Senior Center, you know, Public Works and so forth, or any aspect of the town in exchange for receiving a reduction on their property tax bill. And how it works is the employee who's performing those jobs earns the rate that's no greater than the minimum wage, which we provide for the minimum, at the minimum wage level. And that will be going up to $15 as of January 1st. And the, we have over 100 people in the program, so in recent years, we've had to cap the level of earnings on that program at $1,000 per participant because, you know, that was the cap. And if you have 100 hours, you know, you know, it really was limited to a $1,000 reduction. By limiting, by removing the cap, we'll be able to increase that to the full 1,500. That's the baseline under the program, allowed under the program. So it's, it's another way for a senior who could now work up to 100 hours per year over the course of the year at $15 an hour and could receive a reduction of their property tax bill on the amount of $1,500. So again, it's, and we know the program's popular, and it may even be more popular with this. But John, you want to describe? We do have the funding for this in our overlay account.
Right, our overlay account, we do have adequate funding to fund this increase. And, you know, many times people ask, you know, if they're a participant in the program, do they get actually paid? The answer is, as you mentioned briefly, they receive an exemption or a reduction on that year's tax bill. The only exceptions would be someone sold their property or, in a rare case, completed their hours of service after the bills were already generated.
And so again, this should be another way the town can help seniors. And then there's also, we're also increasing the funding available, again, under a local option under state law, because everything is governed by state law. People may not appreciate the fact that all municipal finance is governed by state law and that we can't even have our property assessed or tax bills issued without state approval. But one of the ones on that is a senior property tax exemption for low-income seniors who, you know, it's, who, and there's only about 40, I think, who would qualify in the past year. I mean, the income level's around $40,000 for an individual, and there's also asset levels, not counting your home and so forth. And so I guess that will be increased from $500 to $1,000 per year. And again, you know, it's probably long overdue to the community, but again, it's helping those who are struggling the most.
Yeah, it's a great program.
Yeah, that is.
So again, it's, it's another way. And I know we're always sort of looking, you know, and I know this tax deferral, I mean, you can sort of describe, John, how we can help seniors.
Right, so there are other programs available. We actually, each time, when we mail the third quarter bills in late December, there's actually a two-sided bill stuff around there. It's on bright yellow paper, so you can't miss it, or bright pink. And it describes all the various exemptions, the tax deferral program. What tax deferral is, you also have to have very low income. But it basically functions in a rough way like a reverse mortgage. Basically, it allows a senior to postpone paying the taxes. Interest does accrue over time at 8%. So the amount that you owe is growing, but it allows the senior to use their, the limited income they have for food, utilities, necessities of life, and postpone paying those taxes to the town until they sell their home.
Right, and in years past, 8% was seen as a high owner's rate, but it might be not so much more now when you've got mortgage rates approaching 8%. So it may be something for seniors to take advantage of. And John, if I come back to you, one of the other changes, and this has to do with a charter change. It's a minor one, but we should note it. This has to do with the annual audit. And I know you're, you're much more involved along with Town Accountant Darlene Lucy in the annual audit, but do you want to just provide for, you know, a brief summary of what's being proposed and why?
Sure, so this, this past year, Darlene and I worked, you know, in cooperation with the Select Board on, we worked on a procurement process to select a new audit firm, because, you know, you do want to change it up every so many years. Chumsford's a little unique in that we have a, we have a language in the charter that requires us to change the audit firm every three years. What we found is with the labor market the way it is, we only really had one solid proposal this year. And when we talked to other firms, they said, you know, generally, you have a lot of startup costs when you go to a, when we start auditing a new municipality. And they were really reluctant to bid. They either didn't have the staff or didn't, you know, couldn't devote the time. So it just, it became apparent to us after talking to other people in the field and that that it was going to be not practical to be able to switch up the audit firms. It would be very, every three years. So generally, what the DOR recommends is that you do it, you have a contract of at least five years or more. And so this is going to require us to bring this to Town Meeting. We'll provide some more detail for the reps, but we think this is a good solution or compromise. This is, we can still change the firm every five years, but three is a little bit cumbersome. And it will add, you know, a lot of cost to the town as well, so.
And then if it does get passed by a 2/3 vote at Town Meeting, it then would go to the town ballot the fall, spring, and April. So that's how that works. Evan, I'm going to come back to you now because we have two acceptances of roadways as public ways on this annual Town Meeting and then the special Town Meeting on the 20th. And normally, street acceptances are non-controversial, and oftentimes, a consent agenda item. But these two are rather unique. Why don't we start with Nab-Nassett Drive? That's a real, relatively new subdivision that's really, I think they just finished constructing the roadway and they're conveying lots. Do you want to just give a perspective in terms of the concerns or issues regarding Nab-Nassett Drive?
Yeah, so Nab-Nassett, as you mentioned.
Let people know where it is, probably first one.
It's off of Dunstable Road near the Westford Town Line. That was approved by the planning board a little over a year ago. Six lot residential, single-family residential subdivision with a extension or a spur from, from the end of the cul-de-sac into the town of Westford. And the property in Westford happens to be zoned industrial. So that's a landlocked piece of property in Westford, and the ownership is, is common on the Chumsford side and the Westford side. So when that was being proposed and deliberated by the planning board, planning board engaged with Paul Averdy, Town Council, and it was well aware by all involved that what was being proposed, approved, ultimately built would potentially provide access into the industrial land in Westford. The major disclaimer was that that would have to be adopted or accepted as a town road by Town Meeting. And that's what brings us to the special Town Meeting coming up. Town Meeting's being asked to accept this, this as a new town-owned road. And in doing so, it would be treated like any other town road, many of which do cross municipal boundaries. And if that's the case, then it's open to any and all vehicular and non-vehicular traffic. So that's what's, I think, unique about this particular one, is that it's likely the first, at least in 15 years that I've been here, where it potentially crosses into another municipality. And more, more importantly, the distinction is that the crossing into the other municipality is not residentially zoned, but it's industrially zoned. So there's a heightened sensitivity related to truck traffic and things of that nature.
Particularly in the wake of what's happened, been happening on Ledge Road.
Exactly.
Which is not far from this location. And then the other one we could touch upon would be Charles Way, which is a much longer history than that. It goes back to the 80s. I don't know if you want to give the planning board perspective.
Yeah, so Charles Way predates pretty much everyone who's involved at this point. That was approved in fairly boilerplate, generic, typical residential subdivision. Unfortunately, in the 80s, the banking industry had collapsed. When the town went to pull the bond, the bond was no longer viable. Houses got occupied. However, the road has deteriorated over the years. So what's in front of Town Meeting is a fairly unique and creative solution to a, you know, probably a two-decade-plus problem and creative solution to a, you know, probably a two-decade-plus problem where a private developer who owns adjacent land will enter into an MOU with the town, provide funding to fix the road.